Everybody rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The call of the green order, roll call.
Eric, let's be there.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Toms.
Yes.
Anyone here for public forum? Consent agenda, any additions?
No.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Muller.
Yes.
Woltman. Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Toms.
Yes.
Okay, library, unique, again.
Some of you are newer in the community, you haven't been here your whole life or even fifty-one years like I have been, so I just got a little background. Dr. Durst came after the Second World War and established his dental practice. He was very active in, he liked to do art stuff and molded things or whatever. And you're probably aware that he has this training display in the museum and he made all those figures that went with it. His wife Margaret was very active on the library board, I'm sure was over there probably more than thirty years, maybe forty years. And she was instrumental in starting the Friends of, what the trustees had helped start the Friends of the Library. So when Margaret died in January, Doc right away wanted to do something artsy, art sculpture for the outside of the library. And he started kind of designing something and then Margaret died a few months later. And so this is what the two daughters, Valia Hansen and Rachel Pitt, have come up with. Both of their husbands are also from this community and so they're very much have loyalty to Lakeview. You'll see the sculpture in front of you. They're working with an, they tried to do locally and couldn't, didn't work out. So they're working with an artist from Dubuque who has done a number of, oh, two pages worth of sculptures that have been used in buildings, parks, libraries, outside sculpture. This would be a steel sculpture, seven and a half, eight feet tall, something like that. Very modern, but I think you can kind of tell what it is. It is, it will need to be recoded, I can't remember if they said ten or twenty years. But the family is planning to put a fund, have a fund available that will maintain this sculpture, that will pay for this recoding that has to be done every so often. It features four figures, a father, a mother, and two children. One of them is standing, a little older, the younger one is sitting. We saw, the library met last week and we saw a model of it about this tall. I should have kept it, we sent it back with the family. The sculpture, sculpture is redoing it a little bit. For instance, the children, the young child's feet, they're sticking out there at the bottom. I think she wants to redo that a little bit so that they won't stick out so far because when we place it, we want to be able to do, go all the way around. It's a sculpture that is viewable from all, all sides. And we want to make it handicap accessible so that people could, even a wheelchair could go all the way around it. It's going to go in from the li, oh, I have another picture here, but I think the one you have is the best. It's going to go in front of the library to the north side. I'll pass these around. So as you're facing the library, it will be to the left of the front door to the north. And what we're planning to do is have some kind of a courtyard or a plaza, something like this, probably circular. The sculpture would be in the middle of it and so people could go all around. It would probably be a brick, brick foundation or bottom. And then probably on three sides, there would be a slab of concrete or a stone or something that people could sit and read a book or view it. Well, I guess I should have mentioned that on the sculpture, that all the people are holding books, that's what, holding a book and reading a book in their hands. And this is kind of what we're visualizing, this is just something crude that the daughter Rachel did that day. There would be a sidewalk coming from the, going from the sidewalk, going to the front door, going over to the sculpture. It would be round and then the sculpture would be in the middle of it, of this plaza. And as I said, there would probably be stone slabs here, here, and here. The family is paying for the sculpture and as I said, they are going to be, putting a, having a fund that would help to maintain it in the future. But they would like help with the base, the plaza, the courtyard. The Friends of the Library are donating five thousand toward that. And we have money in our memorial funds, our TNA, that would probably cover, hopefully will cover the rest of that. So I do not foresee that we will need any funds from the city itself for this. It's going to be all given. But I just wanted to make you aware of it and I hope you approve it. She is redoing it a little bit, the next process is that she will be sending a thirty-inch sculpture and maybe we can show it to you then so you'll actually see what it will really look like. Do you have any questions?
Is that, is that kind of the actual numbers that they're looking at, like fourteen feet across, is that?
Yes, seven and a half to eight feet tall, probably including the base.
Okay.
And you know, maybe the sculpture will shrink a little bit and maybe the base would be a little bit deeper, but that'd be about the total. The height of the building, we went and looked at the blueprints today, from the ground to the, across the eve, is nine, a little over nine feet. And then up, I think it's another nine feet up to the peak. And so they're, I'm sending them those measurements tomorrow because they want to consider that when they consider the actual size of what the sculpture should be. You got a question?
Well, not a question, but has, have you thought about Tanner King?
He, they tried to work with him.
Oh, okay.
They went and looked at, yes, definitely, that's what they were going to get at first. And they went and looked at his sculptures in Auburn, Lake City, and Set City, and Tanner could not give them any figures. I mean, he didn't know about expenses and, he just, he couldn't work it out with them. So then they looked further and they went to this gal, her name is Gail Chavanel, I think she's from Dubuque. But she does have an extensive history, I mean, I have a list of all the places where she has sculptures throughout Iowa. Probably the closest ones to us would be in the Des Moines area or the Mason City Library, places like that. She has a number of libraries over in eastern Iowa.
I just thought, it's local.
Yeah, they, they tried to do that first, they met with him several times and it, it didn't work out.
You might mention the possible date they plan to have it?
Oh, well, yeah, they're, we're hoping that it will be this summer. And you know, we might possibly wait to have our older house at the library till it's all complete. It depends on if they can get it done in June and July or if it's not going to be till August. I mean, you know, we're kind of, we're in limbo about that. But it should be done this summer. Any other questions?
Have you got somebody lined up to do the brick work and all that?
No, no, we're waiting to, when we hear next from her, you know, about actually the size. And what she's, Rachel Durst is a designer. And so she's trying to kind of visualize how big this circle should be. And we want it to be big enough so that if the sculpture's in the middle of it and the sculpture takes up, you know, four feet, maybe four and a half, that's why she's trying to maybe bring it in a little bit so it's not quite so wide, that a wheelchair can get in there and it's handicap accessible, a wheelchair can get all the way around it. And so we're waiting till we know those things before we start checking about who to go to for the, for the base, for the plaza or the courtyard, whatever we want to call it, patio, whatever.
I think it's going to look pretty cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll try, when we get the thirty-inch one, to bring it and let you see what it looks like in person, I'd like to see it.
The council's not required to take any action, but the council might want to have a motion to approve this to show their support.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Here's Petrus Woltman.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Yes, and I want to say I think it's beautiful, it's lovely.
You're welcome. We're very pleased with it, yeah, we're all agreed. And when we met, we met with the Alishes who were president and the treasurer of the Friends too, and so that, you know, they made the commitment for the five thousand from the Friends toward it, yeah.
The library does a great job for the community, can't say enough.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll get better. We've got Resolution 2107. What this is, that landfill meeting, they're going to finance the loan and reduce the rate of the, the interest from savings, fifty thousand dollars. So everybody that's in 2080 agreement with the landfill has to approve this in their council meetings, so basically in a nutshell, that's what this is.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Woltman. Toms.
Yes.
Okay, summer staffing.
Just really take a look at what the positions that we would advertise for. Knowing that the campground manager, we have Sandy on board and then we have a management consultant with Ruth. We'd advertise for the assistant manager position, advertise for three campground attendants, and advertise for one mini golf helper. We talked about the wages of the campground attendants at our last budget session, that would be eleven dollars as the mini golf helper also. And the proposed base wage there for assistant manager, I guess I'd like to have that discussion with you, I put twelve. Or would you like to draw a bigger distinction between a campground attendant and the assistant manager, knowing that the managers pay quite a little bit more?
If you get somebody for that, you know, that would be the big one.
Ah, you know, it's been that, but our incumbent person's been there for, you know, ten years or whatever, twelve, it worked up to that. And it's been twelve, twenty-five than last year.
Personally, I think there should be a little bit bigger differential if they're going to be required to do more.
Another thing we may have to look at is Mark Feeble's salary and maybe we'll have to bump up Eric's one too, I don't know, to keep everybody happy.
Yeah, I guess I did have a proposal on that too, that we would rehire Mark and Eric, our staff last year was great. And last year Eric was at fourteen dollars and Mark was at twelve. And would look at basically bumping Mark so that Mark would be fourteen and Eric would be fifteen.
That sounds much better.
Do, do we expect Mark to be back?
Yeah, he's, he is very excited about returning to work.
Good, that's good.
And Eric's excited that he's coming back.
Just my other, the other thing would be the assistant manager, and I have that there at twelve dollars, but I guess I'd also certainly could, could be talked into a notion of fourteen dollars, I think is, is realistic too.
I think that'd be a common, good idea.
I think that's a good idea, yes.
Well, just knowing that we proposed to advertise for those positions, we'll get them advertised right away, applications would be due on March first. And there's a couple of weeks there to get folks interviewed and whatnot, and we would look to bring this to the council on March fifteenth for hiring.
So do the department heads sit in on those interviews?
Oh, yes, sure. Yep, lots to do with that.
One more staffing. Sandy, you want to give us some information on Black Hawk Recreation?
Just told at our last, I think, I guess I came at the budget meeting. And what our family was proposing and we asked if you, if we could, rather than doing a trailer, which I didn't think looked very professional and nice, we went to the building. And we thank you guys so much for going with us through all our changes and approving it. But now I feel like the building thing's going to cause problems with the rest of the world out here. I'm studying the building on y'all's public land. So what we then went back and looked at is, again, I don't want the trailer idea, so what if we put the building on the trailer? So there's a nice little sketch for you on page six. I thought that looked nice. I made that.
You did?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that would look nice.
So the trailer link, nothing is by measure.
You're going to make the trailer too?
What's that?
You're going to make the actual trailer too?
Well, there's a little work to that trailer. It's going to have a removable tongue that will slide underneath, the hitch, I mean, or whatever you call that thing. I, only for safety reasons because I don't want to be tripping over it because we're not moving this. Once we get it down there for the summer, this is what stays. And the trailer might be, we don't know what size we're using because it might have a little deck off the end. Because we're still thinking about how we can leave some of the kayaks and stuff down there, we haven't worked through all that, but it's going to be with our space and in our trailer. We just keep flipping and flopping, but I feel like this is the best thing so that you guys aren't going to get pounded with hate mail.
We appreciate that.
I know.
What about, instead of a removable hips, having a, some kind of like deck type thing that people could sit on?
They've got some plans, so what's going to happen is, we are going to, we're working with a school, with a high school, we've already talked with Eric. And what he's going to do with the kids at school is take them through the whole set of motions. They're going to draw some blueprints and Josh already warned him, mom is probably going to make lots of changes. We're asking for like three different setups. So they're going to bring the blueprints, they're going to go get all the pricing, we're going to talk about the price. Once it's all done and said, the schools will end up building it and then our little business, Josh and I, we will donate money for their labor back to the school. So we're just trying to get as much involved in, just that's because again, the reason for doing this little project was to get jobs out there for the younger kids and mostly all of our little grandkids and nieces and nephews, we're hoping are going to pitch in with this. So we thought we'd take it a little further and get the school involved also. So that's kind of our proposed idea. The only thing I think we're going to flip is the view from the street on the side, that would probably be the view from the lake because if we did have anything on the inside, we could just slip some doors open and shoot, slide them right on down. So I might flip that, but, but I still want the bike rack down there because we want, I mean, we want to make it look like a rental place during the operating. So our staff is going to have to come a half hour before we open and go get all this stuff out, whether it's from our rental sheds that we have rented, that's over stuffed with stuff to rent out now. Or, and then they have to stay a half hour after to put all this stuff away at the end of the day, make sure it's locked up and secure. And then we'll have, we'll have cameras and we have security, we have it all. Yeah, good, any questions?
Get after it, looks good.
Just, yeah, just a couple of things on, on this yet then, so when we look at Sandy and this, this idea of the, of the building on the trailer platform from our, through our, our agreement with her, it's, it's consistent with what our agreement is, we would not look to make any changes then to, to the agreement. And my other note is the issue about that dock and the, moving that floating dock down to near the Black Hawk Recreation Rentals location. And we do have then permission from the DNR that this can happen. And so we will get that done. Black Hawk Recreation Rentals would buy this kayak launcher and gift it to the city. And the city would then put it, put it on our, on our dock.
On your public dock.
On the public dock.
And this will be a public use kayak launcher, but I'm going to be using it too, yeah. This, you guys, it all came down to safety, the more we got to thinking about where we're putting this little business, by the time we would take our kayaks and paddleboards and stuff down to the maiden loading dock, alls we can think of is how dangerous that is going to be. So we were either going to have to find somewhere else to go, so we went up and down Main Street, there's really nothing on Main Street where we could have done it that's big enough to put all our stuff in and out and out the doors. So we had to go back to the original plan, which was a great, we'll leave that little offer being down there by the lake, but then it got the, this is dangerous. So, thank you.
Yeah, the other note was that we were asked to confirm everything with our insurance company and everything is oil with the insurance company, so. Good.
Awesome. Very good, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Okay, camp present rates.
Yeah. Yeah, I do want to just point out a few things to you and it starts on page seven. And really, I'm glad that Ruth is here to be able to add some comment to this, but also just to really know that people see the numbers and they can know what last year was and that, well, I tell you, it was just busy as anything and the, and the camp staff did a fantastic job about handling that when you see what the numbers were. If our revenues last year were two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, that's about sixty thousand dollars higher than our next highest year. So I, the other thing that I, I just find absolutely flabbergasted me is on page eight, it's the bottom of page eight, and what's happened to total revenues over the course of those fifteen years that are listed there. If you start from two thousand five and, and then those are just annual revenues every year up until two thousand twenty. And seeing that it's been as low as, as a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars and then last year at two hundred ninety-one thousand. I think the growth is, is just absolutely dramatic. Noting that the last rate increase was passed in oh nine and went into effect in two thousand ten. So none of those costs are, that's the only portion of the cost that's attributable to a rate increase. And the other thing I think that's really important there is a couple of things, that, that people like amenities and everything that we've done down there is great. And lake water quality is, is just absolutely a huge driver. And you can, you can tell, especially you look at eighteen, two thousand eighteen, it was down a little bit. We had issues with the, with the lake and, and navigation that year. So I do think it's, it's just interesting to, to look at those numbers and watch them as they grow and you can kind of put reasons down why, why they grow and you can continue to do that.
I think the splash pad has been helpful to this also.
True.
Yeah.
Page nine is, is just a rate comparison of area campground, Sandy put this together. Just one, one little note then, two on that very top one there on Storm Lake, after Sandy sent me out a text this weekend that said Storm Lake has just now increased their rates up there too.
Oh, yeah.
So their rates are, they have cable TV, so it's thirty bucks with cable and twenty-eight dollars without cable.
I did ask Lee over at Corn Belt, like what would cost to run cable through all this, he didn't answer me. I just thought, oh, look at there, they offer cable.
Uh, yeah.
I don't, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
I hate to call it an old technology, but that's an old technology anymore, so.
The Wi-Fi will make up for it.
We hope so.
People want to be able to stream.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a little bit, yeah, while we're talking about, about Wi-Fi, you saw those numbers in, in the memo about a proposal from Corn Belt. And it had hardware costs of six thousand four seventy-eight and that's for three, the installation of three of these units in the center of, of the campground. And then also we got the cost per month and charges for two hundred or three hundred megabots, uh, megabyte subscriptions and we would, I think, want to take a look at the three hundred megabyte. So what we're looking at here is, is just roughly about sixty-five hundred dollars worth of hardware costs and another fifteen hundred dollars per year of, of additional costs for the, for the internet subscription. When you compare that against proposed increases, you can take a look at page twelve. The top section being the actual revenue from two thousand twenty. Now, of course, that's our, that's our highest year, but it's the most recent year and then we just use those same numbers for comparison purposes. So top is actual, the middle section is what would two thousand twenty have been if we added one dollar to every one of the sites? And then increased cabin rental fee to sixty-five dollars from forty? And then the bottom section shows what the fees would have been if we would add two dollars to every one of the site prices. So if we added two dollars and made the cabin sixty-five dollars, it would generate that twenty-nine thousand one eighty-six in additional revenue.
So how did you decide the sixty-five on the cabin?
Uh, it's just a swag, that's open to discussion yet, I think, Vicki, as far as what you, which thing's appropriate.
It's a big jump to me, but.
It's a twenty-five dollar jump.
Right.
Just that, you know, we'll have three cabins down there and two of the three of them will be new, yeah, I guess that's the other part, but it is forty dollars now and I'd be open to whatever your thoughts are.
I'd be okay bumping it up to maybe fifty or something, but sixty-five to me just seems a little steep. I think fifty's a big number. And John, we could always, always go up another five or ten, that's true. Why do, what's your thoughts?
Vicki, sounds good, it really does, because like I said, it's a, it's, it's a cabin, you know, I mean, it's, I like your, an attention, it was an opportunity, so.
Yeah, you can change the rates if you want.
So.
So we'd need a motion to increase the rates from two bucks and then fifty on the cabin if you'd like.
Just, I guess, before we get into that just too much, just know that the proposed rate increases then would go into effect in twenty-two.
Right.
But what's your thoughts about the cabin cost then? If we're going to fifty and we're putting in two new cabins this year, I guess it'd just like the cab, the, the new, the cost for the new cabin to be, to be fifty dollars. There are ten reservations for the old one that would have been made at forty. So are you open to having the old one at forty dollars this year and then the?
The new ones at fifty.
New ones at fifty.
And then make sure they would all go.
Fair enough.
And then they all go at fifty.
Right, yeah.
But if we change that, then there's so much to go in the computer and everything will change again, like on the brochures and all that. So why can't we just set it, leave it where it is?
But you're going to leave the, the ten dollars, you know, the old cabin that way first.
For this year, but for next year, fifty, right?
Fifty, yeah.
For all of them?
For all of them.
For all of them next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forty, fifty, fifty, seven, two? Well, that's what I thought.
You're going to leave the old one at? So Ruth, so Ruth, your, your idea was to keep the old one at forty, was that what you were thinking?
Well, since it's kind of primitive, I, I think, I don't know, maybe we could do them all at fifty, I don't know.
Well, because I was thinking, you know, we can do fifty or we could do the old one forty and the new one's fifty-five or something to make up the difference. It doesn't, doesn't matter to me, whatever makes.
Make up or anything.
It'd be confusing, all the same.
But starting next year, make them all fifty.
Right. This year though, honor the ones at forty.
I'd go forty with the old, fifty with the new because they're new cabins.
Right, starting next year, why do?
No, we'll start that this year.
Oh, okay.
Leave, leave the old one at forty, the new ones at fifty.
And then for the twenty-two rate, do them all at fifty.
All at fifty, right, that's all good.
And a two dollar increase, something like that.
And then publicize that a little bit too, what we've got, you know, updating again our campgrounds and.
You, I had, I'd give credit to Sandy on that, that was one of the first questions I had after, I think, maybe the last meeting was give you the list of all of the improvements that we've done down there here recently and we'll market them.
Working on that.
Yeah, that's, that's important, that, that it's still invented, so.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Have you got the facts on what we're doing?
Two dollar increase. Forty and fifty for twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and then fifty for twenty-two.
Even if we add a few more.
That was a motion, is there a second to that?
Uh, why do you have seconds?
Second, okay, roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Toms.
Yes.
Thank you Sandy and Ruth.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to consider some software, make Kay happy and Bill and Scott, I guess.
Not to make Kay happy.
No. Make her happy or what?
No, we don't want to. So, what started this thing originally is we were looking at a company that might be able to do some mass texting for us. And this program that we're looking at could actually, it advertised as maybe doing some mass texting. And as we get into this, this is not the program that we would utilize to do mass texting. It's just not a good fit. But they do a lot of other really good things. And what this, the main thing that this is gonna do is give us more of a presence than an online presence that allows us to open the scope of services that we can provide online. So, we'll be able to do permits, we'll be able to accept payments online than for things other than utility bills. Right now, we only accept payment for utility bills. So, really, this would open that up and allow for online payments. And then we would also work with that to get to where we can take credit card and debit payments then in the office. Can I kind of talk through that, Kay, if we're on page 13 and talk through some of the stuff?
Well, basically, Mike Scott said, you know, we watched this webinar and it wasn't what we thought it was gonna be, but it actually turned out to be better in some areas as far as what they're doing when he talks about this online presence is that we can have, say, they have a form builder to where you can have all your forms online, you can fill them out online, submit them to us. Then we would, like for building permits, he could approve or Eric could approve, send it back to them and then they could use a credit card to pay online. We can do the same thing with pet license, we can do the, I tried to go through, you know, just the list here. A lot of the folks can call in the winter or fall to have the water disconnected. All of that can be done online with a credit card or an e-check. Right now, our credit card's strictly for utility bills and strictly online. And that's a $4 charge to use a credit card, $1.50 for an e-check. And if we did these other services, we would leave the utility billing the same and then go to a 2.5% or a $1.95 minimum charge for the other stuff. Obviously, we cannot eat the credit card fees that are charged and we have to pass those along to the consumer. So, but on a garbage bag, if you're buying $20 with a garbage bags, most people aren't gonna want to pay an additional $4, right? But a percentage, same with the building permit. A percentage is gonna be a lower charge to be able to use your credit card or your e-check. And a lot of folks do come in and want to know if they can pay with a credit card. Same with the applications for service. Right now, we, they either have to print them off our website, fill them out, send them in with a check, or we email them, they print them out, bill it out, and this way they can do it all online, pay with their credit card online, come in and use their credit card in-house and we would swipe it and it offers a lot more benefits to our customers. I don't know how much benefit that is for in-house work because it seems like it might increase the work a little bit. But the other software we're looking at is called a receipt management program. And the thing we were kind of excited about that is when people come in and pay cash or by check, you automatically put it into their software. It prints out a nice receipt that has City of Lakeview, has your account, has your balance, has how much you paid, has if you paid in full or any left, you know, that you give them. And same with any payment. Instead of the little receipts we hand write, you immediately put it in the computer, it immediately prints out a professional-looking receipt even for your garbage bags, even for your pet license, for your building permit, anything like that to have, to give back to the customer rather than the handwritten ones that we use now. And it's all kept on the system so that at the end of the day, we can print out and see who bought what, what they paid and what they paid with. So, it's a much more detailed record-keeping as far as payments and as far as, you know, keeping track of everything.
So, is this available, like, one day, is still available on weekends, so?
For any of our users that would go online, they could do any of it on the weekend. Now, obviously, you can't come buy your garbage bags on the weekend because we're not gonna be here to give them to you. But you could submit the form, you could submit your pet license and then say we could approve it come Monday. Building permit, you could submit over the weekend, we could approve it come Monday.
Lord, it's unheard of.
Pet license?
How confident are you of? 300 users.
We gotta go back.
I know.
Well, if you look at our ACH users right now, our credit card users and our e-bill customers.
So, that?
That 300, I think, is, we're gonna be real close, if not, you know, maybe have to push it a little bit over that 300, but we think 300 is a good place to start. Because we have, you know, 100 and some e-bill customers, we have several hundred ACH customers. And what we figure, some of those are duplicates, so.
And actually, you know, of course, that ends up being a goal and is trying to get more customers.
More and more on, yeah, but.
E-bill and ACH customers.
300 we thought was a good start.
So, then, so the average cost for using this service would be for, how much would you say for each individual?
For each.
For each transactions?
Each transaction?
So, what they do is it's so much per group of customers. And of course, if you add customers, then you add, there's a cost to the addition. I don't know that we calculated out the per customer cost, do you, Scott?
Well, it's 2160 divided by 300, so it's that $7. But that's the software cost and, you know, that's the entire entirety of it.
That's all the software cost, not just.
You could add new users then in an increment of 50 and it's a lot less than $7 a person.
Yeah, the more you have, the less the cost per customer.
So, how long do you have to sign up with these people? Can they say in a year, you don't like it or how's?
Yeah, it's a year-by-year contract.
Year-by-year, okay.
Yep, yep. And obviously, the software we have, it's the same people. It all integrates with the software that we have, which is really nice. So, it's not like it's a second software or it's not compatible. It's all of it integrates together with what we already have for our general ledger, for our utility billing.
So, Kay, when it says the modules to be phased out and no longer needed, exactly what does that mean?
Well, so, right now, the UBI internet, which would be the utility billing internet, the e-bills, which would be the emailing of the utility bills, and the UBI ACH, all of that would be phased out because it would all be transferred over to this front desk. And so, eventually, as everybody gets on the front desk or we get everybody on the front desk and they're operating through that software, we wouldn't need those three modules, but they would still talk with the other stuff that we have.
So, they would still be able to, you'd still have e-bills available to people and?
Right, it just is operated through the front desk instead of through the, what we use now.
I see.
Yeah, yeah, we're not taking away certainly from.
We won't see any interruption or?
No, you won't see any interruption, no.
You don't get a bell on so long.
Well, let's see.
No, once a month. Well, do you like it or not?
Let me skip a month or two in this process.
It's just customer service.
It is definitely customer service. It's so much more that the customer can do online or with a credit card or, yeah.
It's time we get into the 20%.
Take credit cards in-house instead of always having to, well, right now, if somebody comes in and wants to pay their bill, I have to create an account for them online and then go online and, you know, use their credit card to do that. And this way, we wouldn't have to kind of.
That's old school.
What?
Old school or what?
Well, a lot of our customers, the older folks who want to use their credit card, aren't too internet savvy. So, I go on and create an account for them with their name and address and give them a password.
That's me.
Yeah, yep, and then I process their credit card that way, where with the new stuff, we wouldn't have to do that.
So, total cost of this is 7154?
That's the one-time for the first year. Obviously, a lot of these things, the 1,500 installation, one time, the printer, one time, the in-house credit card machine, they're all one-time cost. The onboarding, a one-time cost. So, just to get into it, that is the cost, obviously. Next year, all of those costs, we would not have, we'd only have the cost of the module, which right now, we, you know, pay for each module for the support, the tech support and to have access to the module. So, you wouldn't have, a lot of those costs wouldn't be an extra cost. They're just a one-time to get into it, get everything set up, get our data converted.
So, if you have, let's say you have an issue with the billings, I don't care, somewhere online. So, will this company then handle the, try to get it straightened out or how's they handle it?
Yes.
You don't have to go back to the old company, okay?
No, same company.
Same, okay.
Same company.
Okay.
Yep.
Same company, better product.
Same company, better product.
Yeah, you can just kind of think about this as enhanced service, but also new generation of software, kind of. You don't even look at that. But, yeah, just, so our software company is G-Works and all of these products are G-Work products.
Yeah.
So, they.
So, they all talk to each other and they all relate and you're all, you're dealing with one company. Yeah, they just have another name for it.
You know, and you talk about service and whatnot, it, you know, as far as IT service goes, it's really quite good. You know, they're very responsive. The other thing, and I want you to know this about Kay and the way that she can interact with this company. And it's always, it's always been a really good relationship. Just know that when G-Works goes out to do a lot of new installs of this stuff and they'll take out training data to do this, they oftentimes takes Lakeview's data to go out and do training.
They've trained new cities, they'll log in, get our data, because they're familiar with it and because we don't have a whole lot of issues in doing it, they use our data to train other towns that are getting the software.
Are we getting a royalty for it?
Well, we should.
Just ask it.
I'll check on that.
We probably can't handle their credit card though.
Yeah.
It looks like it's time we catch up with the rest of the.
And we've had some budget for this.
Yeah, this was that item that we were referring to it to budget for next year.
Okay, all right.
Timing on this would occur within weeks instead of months, though. This would be a springtime type of deal.
I gotta get an iPhone.
That's gonna happen. I like my flip phone, I just never know where it's at.
I'm gonna motion to approve this process.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Stinkin'.
Yes.
Fulton.
Yeah.
Reese.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thanks for everything you do, Kay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. How soon until it's available to the public, roughly?
Yeah, if I could tell you six weeks was that kind of in the ballpark.
Yeah, we're hoping to get some of it implemented ahead of time so we can have a chance to work with it and kind of get familiar with it before everything is implemented. But, yeah, they're talking like six weeks.
So, you're gonna have to have another person around and just try to teach people how to do this?
Um, Kay will be the teacher.
You got one shot, one shot only, right?
You should be able to get it done this summer while I've got some time.
I got a question.
Yep, you stop in, we'll get you logged in.
Kay, I have a question.
I don't have much time.
Of the work you, the day you got hired, now, from now till then till now, 90% of what you do now, you didn't do the day you got hired. Did you say that?
I would say, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. I don't know if Mr. Peterson always does, but, you know.
He does.
He did, we asked him.
I yell at him a lot.
Yeah, thanks, Kay.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we have an administrative report?
Yeah, just a few things. We guys get to work on our comprehensive plan update. And I'm getting our committee together on that. I'm looking for a volunteer from the council to be on the council plan committee. I would anticipate about one meeting a month for somewhere around a year.
Otherwise, we'll have to get somebody from the library to work to help.
So, what this comp plan, what's it all entail then, you're talking about?
Yeah, so it really is a comprehensive plan for the community. It's taking a look at everything from our housing to our infrastructure to our parks too, to all aspects of the community and ultimately coming up with the plan for how we would see the community into probably the next 10 years. And then the legal side of it is that this comp plan becomes the basis for its own. So, we have gone through this, last time that we updated was in 2010.
Yeah.
And it's about time for that.
Yes.
I'll probably, I'll volunteer, I guess.
All right.
I'm a sucker for punishment.
Thank you, Whitey.
Yeah.
All right, I'm interested in your feedback on this. We had a phone call this afternoon and it's from the Corral. And they said, well, if they can play ice, play golf on the ice for the Arctic Open, we want to do a wintertime bags tournament. Now, it'd be a street closure north of their place.
Well, it'd be fun.
Yeah.
I think I can't, no problem, they won't stand out there freezing.
I'm sure there'll be some people who would like to do that. But, so I talked with Brandon about it. And, you know, I think he's of the same mind that if we can accommodate this and be able to allow business to do something, it's great. Always focusing on safety. And there's a couple of things that if it's snowing and especially if we're ending up having to do any snow removal at the time, that's a problem. And just that north side of that building, it's always icy there too. And, you know, they would ask to close the street and basically we stand out on the icy street.
No time to get it scraped.
Oh, we couldn't do anything with here.
Well, it can't be any worse than that post office down here. That's probably got to be the worst place in town. When you go get the mail, these old people getting out of these cars, there's always ice in there, you know?
Yeah, it's that way too at the, in front of the choir practice place there.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I saw that today when I got out there.
I don't know what to do about that and I've been a long time.
Well, I think, I think there's like a hump.
There's a, it's a back slope on the parking spaces, so that happens. But, you know, that is kind of funny because we also got a, we got a call from Julie, a call of appreciation about that we did a real nice job of removing the snow.
Well, I just notice when I get out, you know, a lot of times there's pure ice, you know, you really gotta be careful. And I'm more worried about old people, not me, but I mean, old people.
There you go, Derek.
You know?
Where I left this thing about the Corral and their bags tournament is with Brandon is that we do want to kind of play it by ear and check on the weather. And somewhat depending on what the weather's anticipated to be, then if it's feasible to do that, he would be on board. So, is the council will be on board with that?
I think so.
I'm not gonna stand out there, but they can.
I don't like downtown.
Yep, I don't like when it's hot, so I don't shit.
They also want to promote winter activities.
Yeah, winter activities is another thing.
Lakeview hosts the Sack County League meeting, which would be next Thursday, so they get to the 11th. And we would host the meeting out at Docket. Whitey's available?
Yep.
Tammy's going on vacation.
I'm leaving that day.
Oh, I suppose you go in there, it's hot and sticky.
It's not gonna be hot like we're bidding.
Yeah, I think too.
Derek?
I think maybe. What day is that on?
Week from Thursday, so the 11th.
Okay.
Northwest Iowa.
I shot the 12, so it might be, you know.
You want to go have a good time on the 11th.
I have only heard one.
I've heard two or three already.
I don't know.
I don't know. Is it the first shot or the second shot?
I guess I didn't ask about that. I, well, one of them, I'm almost sure was the first one.
Well, that was, neither was the radio for, where was it, or something? She had her first shot and she was.
Is that the end of the report?
Northwest Iowa League would be the week after that on the 18th up at Cherokee. And speaking of the 18th, that would be the date that I would be taking off on vacation. I would anticipate I would be gone on vacation from the 18th through the 26th. Now, that's through the next Friday. We have a council meeting then on March 1st. I'll get a council packet out to you, that'll be sometime over the weekend then prior to that.